Good evening. I want to welcome everybody here to our school board meeting on Monday, March 18th, 2013. My apologies for starting a little bit late. We had a pre-meeting that ran a tad over, but we're ready to roll at this point. Tonight's meeting will start with our call to order, which is now the approval of the agenda. Anyone here for open forum will have that. The superintendent's report will follow. We have three discussion items tonight. The superintendent's search update, our search team is here to report on that. The city school anti-bullying task force update, and the policy development first readings and discussion of policy 806, which is our crisis management policy, and policy 616, which is the school district system accountability. We'll then proceed to the consent agenda, and then to the action agenda, of which there are no items tonight, communications and transmittals, and finally adjournment. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Nancy moved it, Jim second. We will approve it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have a 7-0 vote. Now, is there anyone here tonight for open forum? Okay, none appearing. We'll move along to the superintendent's report. Dr. Bowers?
Well, even though the weather doesn't make you feel like it, spring is around the corner, and in fact, we have kindergarten roundup tomorrow. And so that's very exciting when we actually get the number of students that we have coming in. I know that we've had discussions already about holding on open enrollment until that we get a good sense of the number of students that are interested in, first off, that are from St. Louis Park, and then we'll look at people from outside of our district. And then the second is, a well-deserved break is coming up next week, and that we're all looking forward to at least using our time a little bit differently next week, so it's spring break. So with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. At this point, we will jump into our discussion items. We'll start with the superintendent's search update. Bob Oslin from SEC, and that is not Securities and Exchange Commission, by the way, that is School Exec Connect, and they are the search team we have hired in order to facilitate our superintendent's search. Bob?
Thank you, Chair Richardson, Superintendent Bowers, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be with you this evening, and it's certainly our pleasure as our firm of School Exec Connect to be assisting the board in this extremely important process of the search for your next superintendent of schools. I'm used to Elmo here. Our team that's working on this search is, in addition to myself, Dr. Ken Dragseth and Dr. Charlie Kite, both retired superintendents as well, and very active yet in education in Minnesota, are part of the search team. And I already should mention Dr. Antoinette Johns, Toni Johns, too. Toni, as you, I think most of the board knows, is very engaged right now, has the interim superintendent at WEMAP, so that's got her busy enough where she's not taking as quite an active role in the search as she normally would be. But, believe me, she will be involved, and certainly when we get to the point of taking a look at the candidates and doing some recruiting, too, as well, and deciding, you know, who's really a good fit for St. Louis Park in terms of the candidates we bring forward, she will definitely be involved in that, so I want to mention her name as well. We do specialize in superintendent searches, as noted here, and our firm did about 40 last year. I think we did six in Minnesota with our Minnesota group, and we are, one completed and three others underway this year in Minnesota. And it's districts like St. Louis Park, suburban districts, regional centers, kind of our specialty, and so we're delighted to be here and a part of your process. We were in your district on March 5th, where we met with a wide variety of people across the district, both members of your staff and various focus groups, as well as community. We had an open community meeting on that evening. We had a very, you know, excellent participation in that, in those sessions on March 5th, and got some great input concerning what people wanted to see in terms of the next superintendent, as well as their perceptions of the district, the goals they should be focused on, you know, strengths of the district that people are really excited about, issues that people feel need to be addressed, and so on. We'll take a look at the rest of the schedule towards the end of this presentation. We met with 26 focus groups that day, 140 individuals total, members of the school board, as you can see, administration, teaching staff, students, parents, community leaders, the open community meeting that I mentioned. Great input, and very consistent input, more so than a lot of places. And sometimes you'll see, you know, the board and administration, and maybe being a little different than the teaching staff, which may be a little different than the community. That was not the case here. It was very consistent, very consistent input, and that's good to see, because, you know, people are getting, you know, when people have the same perceptions, you know, there's some level of, it affirms perceptions a little bit from one person to the other when you're not all over the map, and you are not. And then in addition to the focus group input, and the board's been provided with all that input, and I think it was like 20 pages of input from all the various interviews that day, and then we use that input when we put together the attributes that we feel the next superintendent should bring to be successful here, and we'll get to those attributes in just a minute. But in addition to the focus group input, we also had an online survey available to the residents of every district, and staff, and so on, and we had about 160 people that took advantage of that opportunity to complete that survey. The board has also received, well, a couple documents for the online input. One was a summary, kind of a condensing of the top responses in each of the areas in terms of the goals the district should be focused on, the strengths of the district, issues to be addressed, and of course, the attributes, qualities, characteristics that people would like to see in the next superintendent. We also asked people to provide questions that they think the board should ask, you know, the next superintendent candidates, and I don't even remember now, but there were 100 and some questions, I think, if I remember correctly, that were suggested, and some very good ones, so the board can use that information as they look to create questions for the first round of interviews coming up in a few weeks. Out of that, out of that input came the attributes that we think are important for anyone who's going to be successful here. And these are, you know, obviously, as we go through these attributes, it will soon become apparent that anyone who would possess all these strengths and skills to the utmost degree doesn't exist, or they would walk on water if they did, because they, you know, we are all human, and every candidate will be human, and people bring different strengths. But these are things that, to the degree possible, you know, it would certainly enhance success and be appreciated by your district and community if the leader could bring a high level of these attributes. And these have fallen out, as I mentioned, out of the input that we received, and I'll talk about that as we go through them quickly here. A visible and active leader, that's not unusual. Every superintendent needs to be a visible, active leader, in the school, certainly, and in the community as well. And there's not a community that we work in that doesn't feel that way, and that's just part of who a superintendent is. So that's not at all unusual. One of the things that is somewhat unique, though, for St. Louis Park, is the quality and, I guess, the power, if you will, in some ways, of the existing community partnerships you have. There's an outstanding partnership here that exists between the city and the school district, Park Niklitz and the school district, and many other community organizations, and to an extent that goes beyond what you find a lot of places. So obviously, for someone to pick up with that and to continue on, and to continue to nurture and culture those partnerships, it needs to be somebody who is adept at that, that's just who they are. They shouldn't be comfortable with it, it needs to be who they are, that's just how they operate. So we will be looking for that in terms of the candidates that we bring to you. A visionary person is, again, certainly something that's not unusual in looking for a superintendent. Being strategic in terms of how you approach, you know, the future is something that, you know, really any leader, to be successful, has to do. A strong background in curriculum articulation and instructional best practices, that again, you know, the superintendent is an instructional leader. Your district does, you know, has had, you know, some budget cuts and changes over the years, and so that did surface a lot in terms of curricular leadership. And so whatever the superintendent can bring to that, and as far as the structuring of the administrative team, would be certainly a plus, and so we will look for that in the people that we bring forth, a really strong instructional leader, and someone who has a good handle on curriculum articulation, transitions between buildings, et cetera. There's a lot of pride here in being creative and innovative, you know, you've been creative and innovative as a district on many occasions in the past. You had one of the first immersion schools, one of the first to adopt the International Baccalaureate Program. People are proud of that, and as they should be. And so somebody who will come in and continue that legacy in a setting toe in a continuous improvement mindset through those, through that kind of thinking is desired, and we certainly will be looking for that. The third attribute here talks about a collaborative consensus builder, someone who, in making decisions, seeks input from a wide variety of community members and staff and so on, in a very proactive and transparent manner. You know, everywhere that we work, we hear from people that there's a desire to have input. When we met with people from the St. Louis Park community, it went beyond that. It went to the point of, we will be providing input, and in fact, if we're not providing input, that project probably isn't going to go anywhere, and so you better be ready to receive input. And we heard that, and that's why it's part of this attribute, because there again, it better be part of the nature of this individual who would assume this position if they're going to be successful. It's very, very important here. An excellent communicator, again, it's pretty hard to imagine someone being successful as a superintendent if they don't have relatively strong communication skills, whether it's speaking, or writing, or listening, obviously, as an active listener, and the ability to use technology to enhance the effectiveness of communication. All those things are important anywhere. Something that did come up here a lot is, and not surprisingly, is to use those skills as a part of a program to effectively market the district. You sit in the middle of probably, well, certainly the most competitive educational market in Minnesota, there's no question. The western suburbs, the private school options that exist here within your district and close by, you know, there's some great options, and it's a very high-level competitive marketplace. So it does call upon the district to, you know, have to be a player in that environment. You'd certainly do a good job with it, you attract more students than you lose, and so on, but you have to always keep continually improving in that area, and someone who can bring a bent to that is going to be important. There isn't a student alive who doesn't want a leader who would be a passionate advocate for them, and I think very few, you know, parents and community members don't understand how important that is, so that one, you do find a lot. On your information here, this is somewhat of an abbreviation of the attributes, and the full attribute also talks about, you know, this focus on academic excellence and on building developmental asset, assets to enhance achievement. That's about St. Louis Park. You have been a leader for years, you know, a couple of decades probably now, in terms of, you know, Search Institute and research on building developmental assets in students and how that enhances their development and achievement and so on, and other districts, including districts where I've been have come to try to learn from you in that respect. And so for somebody to come here, they better be ready to be a part of that and to embrace that, and so we will be looking for that as well. St. Louis Park, like everywhere essentially, has been a changing district. You're not the same district you were, you know, five, 10, 15 years ago, and you are going to continue to change, like really all districts. You're becoming, you are extremely diverse and becoming more diverse, and it, so someone who has experience with diversity, someone who embraces, you know, cultural diversity, something that really enriches an environment for learning and is culturally competent, is, again, something that's going to be a real asset for the person who comes in here, and with an understanding of increasing the opportunities for all students to be successful, to address, you know, achievement gap issues and so on. One of the things that we were impressed with in St. Louis Park is that most people, when they talk about the cultural diversity of the district, frame it as a plus, frame it as a positive, frame it as something that enriches the learning environment. Not all places are like that, you know, there are places that more frequently it'll be framed as a problem we have to address, as opposed to an opportunity that we can take advantage of, in part as creating a real synergistic, you know, wonderful, comfortable-with-the-world microcosm of the world learning environment. So that's a huge step in the right direction, and it's something, you know, we're all working on enhancing in terms of success for all, but you're certainly ahead of a lot of places in that respect. A leader who sets high expectations, obviously, you know, this is a community with high expectations. I remember one of the quotes from one of the focus groups was, "This is a community that demands high expectations, but will also step up and pay for them," which I thought was a pretty powerful statement, and it is a really supportive community. You have had a history of supporting, you know, school referenda issues, and sporting success through, you know, a big cadre of volunteers, and, you know, the community partnerships, and so it's a community, like I say, with high expectations, but they'll step up and help deliver those high expectations, and so somebody who fits comfortably into that and holds people accountable in appropriate ways to assure that, and building, you know, cohesive, effective team in the process is going to be important. School finance is always important. You have a very well-managed district financially, you have a history of that. It certainly doesn't rise to the level here in terms of, you know, it isn't a district where you have, we all have concerns about finance, and we've all had to cut budgets, and it's been, you know, several years of difficult finances for every district, but you have managed it well, you have a strong history there, so you don't, you know, you don't have to find a superintendent to fix it, but you have, but the more expertise a superintendent has, the more they can communicate about finances, and take a pretty complicated subject and make it somewhat simpler for the public, it all helps in terms of garnering public support and understanding and transparency regarding finances, so you want to keep that Interpersonal skills, you know, they're always going to be part of leadership, and so, and a high integrity, that word, I think, when you use adjectives to describe somebody, you know, trust, integrity, you know, those are the things that come up so often, and from people, and you would expect that to be the case. Someone who is always has the highest integrity and creates a real safe environment for, you know, and I'm not talking about physical safety here, you know, although that's important too, obviously, but emotional safety, safety for expressing ideas, and in a real healthy environment is really the focus here. This next, they're all there, I've got to keep looking over at Elmo and make sure I'm not doing it wrong here. The second to last bullet talks about community education, and I mentioned to people earlier that I've done quite a few of these, and I've never incorporated one that's literally specifically on community ed. But that again, that's St. Louis Park, that's who you are, you know, you have a rich history that, again, 20 years ago, coming and looking and trying to steal stuff from you regarding community ed, senior programming, and so on, and that's something that's a proud part of your history and needs to continue to be a part of who you are. So the next superintendent coming in needs to, you know, certainly understand the power of that, and have a great appreciation for it, and, you know, a high value on it, and, you know, every aspect, whether it's senior programming on one end, or preschool programming on the other end, and all the things that that can bring in terms of quality programming and student success. And finally, the last attribute, you know, technology is, you know, it's becoming so much more always, every day, an integral part of our lives, to the point where, you know, it is literally, they say the number one threat now would be something that would disrupt our technology in terms of, you know, cyber attacks, and so that's how critical it's become to our functioning, and it is really, you know, technology's been growing importance in education for quite some time, but it's really, it's kind of flipping over now into being not just a fancier way of doing what we've always done, but more comfort with technology to do things, to provide instructional opportunities that never existed before, and that's when it really is, you know, a quantum leap in terms of educational effectiveness, and tracking student progress and so on. It's just really getting to another level. So the superintendent doesn't have to be, you know, extremely adept personally with technology, although it helps, but just to have an appreciation, be able to use the communication aspects of it, and support an environment that continually, what's it, lead instructional effectiveness in ways we weren't able to do before. So there again, like I said, the person who does all these things to the highest level doesn't exist, but someone who is skilled to a fair degree in all those levels, they do exist, and they are out there, and that's who we'll be looking to bring to you. The rest of the process after tonight, we are now getting into our recruiting phase. We will use these attributes as we recruit and assess candidates. Actually, we were interviewing potential candidates today for a couple different searches, including yours, and we will continue to do lots of that, and we will then narrow down the field of applicants to, you know, five, six, seven, whatever candidates that we think really fit you, and we will bring them to you on April 29th on the schedule, and we'll present the candidates to the board that evening, actually by description only, because by Minnesota state law, it's still private information as to who's applied at that point. But when you decide, yes, we'd like to interview these people, all of them, all but this one, typically it's all of them, but it's your prerogative, but once that action is taken, then the names become public. Prior to that, they're not. So that will happen on April 29th, and we save five, six candidates to interview, but we always use that plus or minus. It could be five, it could be six, it could be seven, you know, it's really hard to say. And then, on May 1st and 2nd, I think it's, if I remember correctly, starting at 5:30, 5:30, 6:45, and 8 o'clock, candidates will be interviewed. Now, obviously, if there are seven, the first night, there are probably four, so run, you know, an hour and 15 minutes later, and then after the final interview on May 2nd, then we'll work with the school board to facilitate reducing the field to two or three finalists, typically three, it could be two, but it usually ends up to be three. And then, assuming there were three, they would come back to the district each separately on their own day on May 7th, 8th, and 9th, and spend the entire day here, a long day, entire day into the evening, and it's very important for the public to realize that this is another opportunity to be involved in the process. They will be, they'll tour the district, and they'll be interviewed by several different groups throughout the course of that day, staff groups, community groups, and every group will fill out a feedback form, so the board will see the feedback from every individual that's involved with that as a part of their decision-making process. And then, that schedule hasn't been set up formally yet, but usually, usually at 5 o'clock, usually the time that works the best, there is an open invitation, community interview. So anybody who lives in the St. Louis Park School District who would like to be a part of that process, we would certainly encourage them to attend that meeting. They'll have the opportunity to hear from the candidate, a little bit about their background and so on, and then open it up to any question they would like to ask of the candidate, and then fill out a feedback form again at the end of that as well, that the board would receive. And then the board will have dinner with the candidate, and then do their final interview at the end of the evening. And after the last of those final interviews, then the board would engage in a process to narrow it down to the person they would like to enter into negotiations with to be your next superintendent of schools, and then that person would, you know, it would be presumed that that contract would be settled in May, and it's, you know, it would be very unlikely that would be a problem, and certainly never been a problem in our experiences for that to be the case, and then that person would assume their responsibilities on July 1. So that's where we are, that's the process to date and the future, and future possibilities for involvement, and with that, I would entertain any questions you might have.
I might add here that prior to this meeting, we spent an hour with Bob, so our questions are fairly minimal, but Bob, I would like you to comment on one thing. You said something about our students in the course of the, you interviewed about 40 of our students, and you said something about them that I'd kind of like the parents at home to hear.
Chair Richardson, members of the board, yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. I did share with the board when I went over this information with them prior to the meeting here, that we typically meet with a student group in every district where we work, and I always look forward to it, because they're typically really delightful and thoughtful and fun, and, you know, I'm going to probably get in trouble here, but I tell you, not with St. Louis Park, but with other places, your students were absolutely fantastic. I mean, they were, there were about 40 of them, and they ranged from 7th grade through 12th grade. They were so articulate, you know, brought up the greatest thoughts, and were just intuitive, bright, and so comfortable talking about issues that a lot bright, and so comfortable talking about issues that a lot of kids and a lot of adults aren't comfortable with. Talking about the relationships with each other, talking about race in ways that were just constructively thoughtful, it was so impressive. And, yeah, it was, I'll always remember that, it was a wonderful group.
We want to thank you. We appreciate your time, the time you've spent with us, especially the structure of putting those interviews together, making sure we got feedback from all of our constituencies. You still have an opportunity for your input. As Bob mentioned, there is more time as we narrow down the process. I also want to thank the community for their input. On the survey that was taken, there were 161 inputs to our survey. That's a good, solid number for a district our size and that was pretty exciting. Also, the information that was provided, both from the interviews and from the survey, provides us with strengths and challenges and priorities analysis that can also be used in our strategic planning process, and we intend to do that. So we really do appreciate this whole process. It gave us an inside view and an outside view from our consultants and we greatly appreciate that. So Bob, to you and your team, thank you, and to the community especially, thank you all very much.
Well, and thank you, and let me too. I was derelict in not thanking Sarah and Cynthia and Kimberly and the staff who did so much of the work in putting all those groups together and inviting people. And we always, we have to lean on staff from time to time and they've been wonderful and we'll have to do that a little bit yet, but we appreciate that and appreciate again the opportunity to work with you, so thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, we will hear from Sarah and her team. Our communications manager is one of the coordinators of the City School Anti-Bullying Task Force, and we will now have an update from that team.
Thank you, Chair Richardson. Also with me tonight is Marnie Olson, and she is the community liaison for the city of St. Louis Park, as well as Karen Waters, who is a St. Louis Park parent and resident. So I have two people joining me as well to talk about the task force. As you know, there are a lot of definitions and a lot of conversations right now around bullying. Just wanted to refresh everyone's memory on what the school board policy says about bullying. So I'll let you just go ahead and read that at your leisure. It's also posted on our website under our bullying policy. So that's where we start our conversation. With that, we know that there's a lot going on already in the city and in the school district. We have responsive classroom lessons, we have DARE, which is a collaborative effort between the schools and the city. We have an elementary counseling grant under the concept of Sparks. We also address bullying there. We have bar programming at the high school, we have social work interventions, and rounding out the bevy of opportunities is the task force. So we, about a year ago, coming up in the next month, we decided we should come together and address this issue. We were both looking at different possibilities, wondering how this all would come together. Marnie and I had a cup of coffee and said, let's do this together, we can be more efficient and we can cover more ground. And so we came together and we came up with these objectives and these goals. Really coming down to the core of it, we wanted to establish one vocabulary, we wanted to work together, we wanted to educate, we wanted to build some momentum around this issue and create an environment that continued St. Louis Park as one of the hundred best communities. And so that's been our goal. What's probably more important is that this isn't a task force that you're going to see ten years from now. You might see another task force, but we made a goal that this would be a one-year effort. We would come together, we would be very specific about what we were doing, and then we would move on to the next issue or if there needed to be a part two to this conversation, either on the city side or on the school side. So this is, this is a task force that really does have a beginning and an end. As I mentioned, we have members from not only the city side, but the school side. We pulled from the District Parent Advisory Council, which is the Superintendent's Advisory Council. We had representatives from almost every school, as well as myself, leading that effort. We also had Clarence Pollock, Principal at Aquila, who joined us just to make sure that we were really tight in terms of how this would interact with curriculum. And then on the city side, we pulled in the Human Rights Commission, which is coordinated by Marnie. And with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Marnie and Karen, and they're going to walk you through some of the activities that have been completed and those that are scheduled in the coming year.
Thank you very much. We've done a lot. We've worked collaboratively and very effectively, starting with our meetings. Most recently, we're finishing off the Upstander Poster Contest for the City School District Calendar, so we'll be seeing that very soon. We had in October viewing at the JCC of a documentary created by recent Edina High School graduate Alec Fisher called Minnesota Nice. That was a really great community event. We had really great participation with parents, students, and other community members. We had a really effective dialogue with Alec after the presentation. Subsequently, Rashmi from our committee nominated him for CARE TV 11 Who Cares, and Alec won that award for the work he's done on that documentary. Our community was fabulous supporting that effort. Rob Metz at the high school, Les Bork at the middle school, a number of businesses, Cub Foods, Caribou Coffee, House of Sport, Munchies, the library, the rec center, Starbucks, City Hall, the JCC, Dr. Skinner at Benild St. Margaret, the youth group directors who belong to Children First, Karen Atkinson connected us with them, and Youth Frontiers. All of those entities helped get the word out about our event, helped with ticket distribution, so we had really good attendance. Other things that have happened as a result of that effort, one of our parents, whose daughter is in ninth grade here, she is a guidance counselor at St. Paul Central High School. She was able to connect with Alec through our committee and used that video as an in-service for their teaching staff. I love collaboration like that. The junior high did a stepping stone theater production on bullying. The Sparks counselors hosted in October Upstander Day and sent home a backpack flyer with resources for parents. And we're getting ready to go on to the next steps, but I think we've accomplished a lot already. Thank you.
All right, so coming up for the task force, actually as Karen mentioned, the Upstander poster contest is moving forward. We actually are partnering with Children First and we are going to be featuring the artwork of the poster contestants at the 2013 Ice Cream Social, which is pretty exciting. And also, we are going to be featuring the artwork in the 2013-2014 City School Calendar, which is a really great way of educating our community. And it's, we had participants from kindergarten through our seniors in the community that participated and will be featured, so that's pretty exciting. And then kind of our final event, leading into back to school for fall of 2013, is going to be the showing of a documentary called Bully. It was originally titled The Bully Project, so some of you may have heard of it with that previous title. It was released in theaters last year. One of our human rights commissioners met the director. It was actually shown at the, at the West End for the Twin Cities Film Fest. He met the director there and has been, and works with them. We're excited to show that and bring that to the community and to do a community viewing similar to what we did with the Minnesota Nice documentary, and that'll be just before kids are back in school. And then also, we are going to be having some supporting resources, again, for people related to bullying. So we have a lot more to do left in this, for this task force, but we have accomplished a lot and we have a really good committee that is excited about finishing off this task force really strongly. Thanks.
I've got a quick question for you. With the success of the October viewing of the Minnesota Nice, do you have any plans to show it again or offer it again for the ones that did miss that?
We hadn't talked about it yet, but that's a really good idea, that we can bring back to the task force and certainly look and see if that's something, I don't, I was on leave at that time, I'm not sure if that's even available online or another source. It is available on YouTube. So we can look at possibly bringing that back again in another way. Other questions?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the task force for all the work that they've done so far on this important initiative. On the objective and goals, being someone who's very interested in data, I noticed that one of your objectives is to reduce occurrences. So I wonder if we currently have a baseline for what our occurrences are and then what is, what is our, what is our goal?
The baseline we pull off of is discipline data, which is what we have from the school side. We don't have a baseline data point from the city side other than the city survey, which is done every two, three years? And that asks a question about bullying and comfort in your environment as well. So that's what we're using as our benchmarks to see if we can move that needle to the positive side. So because this is a short window of task force, we're not entirely sure, we didn't set benchmarks in terms of a percentage or a number of points to move that needle. We're really hoping that this is more of a grassroots kind of information effort than an action effort.
Thank you. So you would not have, you wouldn't have started with whatever you started with beginning and then what are you going to end up with at the end?
We'll have both of those data points, but we didn't set a specific goal to increase by two points or four points or a set percentage.
Evan, one other.
Julie first.
I just wanted to thank you for some really wonderful work and put a little context around this because there's a lot of publicity right now about bullying and policy, and as I drove over here, they were reporting on legislative hearing today on a law to make our state law on bullying stronger. It's important, when this has come up before, we've said this, but just so everybody knows, while our state law isn't all that strong, the model policy that the State School Boards Association developed is considered one of the best in the nation, and that's the policy that we've adopted here in St. Louis Park. So it's just, I want people to know that our policy and practice regarding this is considered one of the best, at least in the country. But all of, and all of that's, that is geared largely towards what do we do if we hear about an incident, which is important. But I think the really critical work is the kind of thing your task force has been focusing on. How do we work with our students and our community, our, the adults in our community to try and prevent this? And we have to work with the adults because frankly, sometimes the adults are the bad role models. Interesting letter to the editor in the paper in that regard recently, but it's, so it's both kids and adults. And I'm glad to hear that that video, that is on YouTube because that probably means we don't have to ask them back. Our schools can download it anytime and use it, so it's good to know that it's that accessible. So I just would encourage our schools to continue working with our students because you do this nice work for a year and then a year later, it's a different batch of kids that's entering, you know, those horrible, risky years when this happens the most, and we need to just keep working with our kids in the kinds of things that you've been looking, been working on. And I'm really looking forward to the next year's city school calendar to have all those posters in there. That'll, that's a, that's a good use of the student artwork in a place that's going to get widely distributed, widely used and seen on a regular basis.
Nancy?
I know we talked about it at the board last time, but in case somebody watching at home wasn't watching that, do you want to explain what the upstander means with respect to bullying?
It's a, it's a cross between upstander and bystander is kind of the two paradigms of the word. And being an upstander is standing up for yourself or others when you see bullying occur in its most basic sense. There's a much longer definition, but we'll go with the basic understanding of what an upstander is. So what's fantastic is the artwork that you will see at the Ice Cream Social, as well as in the calendar, is from elementary age students all the way through middle school and high school, all the way through adults and seniors and their interpretation of what it means to be an upstander. And it's, it's some inspired artwork. We were all really excited when we saw it come in.
We want to thank you. I just want to make a comment on CNN, I think it was two weeks ago, they had the follow-up to the movie Bully. If you have not seen it, it is absolutely fabulous. And Nancy referred to the upstander that we discussed a little bit last week. Our students adopted that word to be an upstander into their code, and this is the kid's code, not pushed on by anybody else, but it's their code here at the high school. And to be an upstander, what I, the statistic that came out of the follow-up on CNN was that where bullying does occur, only 10% of the time does someone intervene or someone stand up for themselves. And that movie, Bullying, is powerful because it shows actual bullying in process and then follow-on from school administration how not to handle it. So I think it's powerful stuff and the follow-up is just excellent. So it's, there's, there's great things going on, so I'm really an advocate of seeing the movie when it's shown here and then any follow-up statistics, we can throw off that, I think. But we really appreciate what you are doing and highly recommend that everybody participate in that movie in the fall. Thank you all very much. Next item on our agenda, the superintendent will discuss, there are two policies, Policy 616, School District System and Accountability, and 806, Crisis Management. And this is the first reading on this, and the superintendent will discuss them.
I'd like to start with the one about the School District Systems Accountability. And actually, it's nice having Sarah here tonight because that DPAC was formed in order to meet the state statute that talks about what you need to do as far as making sure how that you are providing information to the community about curriculum and instruction and have input. And there is actually a checklist that we need to complete every fall, and then we have our systems accountability report that is due out October 15th of each year. So this is taking the MSBA policy and taking what is in statute and putting the checklist into much longer verbiage. So maybe we'll start with that one, and then I'm going to ask Tammy to talk about the crisis prevention when you're ready to talk about that one.
Julie?
I really appreciate the intent behind this policy. I think it's one that suffers a little bit from the changes from when it was first created, which was back when we, it involves references to academic graduation standards, and that's something that we and everybody else have already dealt with. And I appreciate that our DPAC, our, fits the needs for this. My concern is that the model policy goes into more detail than I think is generally wise in a policy by including monthly dates of meetings and being more prescriptive in membership than the state law on which this is based actually goes. And, you know, given that we review policies, they're meant to be higher level and continue for a period of time without not having to go back in there because we decided to meet in February instead of January, or to be accused of being, not violating it because we have, you know, two people from some group instead of one person. You know, I'm glad we are, in essence, meeting this, the, what the policy requires, but I would encourage us to do some look at it as to whether, in this case, we really want to adopt as policy everything that is in the model policy.
Any other comments? I would concur with Julie. Just my reading of what was written here, to conform to MSBA's policy, I mean, it takes it out of the superintendent's hands and I just can't see. it out of the superintendent's hands and I just can't see allowing that to happen. So, I would, I would say we should do a very thorough review of this. I would also be interested if somebody can pull what other districts, the wording other districts have done with it and Sarah perhaps, you can do that or some, somebody, oh, okay. Thank you, Cindy. Cindy will do that. Just because the way of this, the wording of the MSBA is not anything that I could be comfortable adopting at this point. So, I'd just like to, like that. And then as Julie said, way too much detail in this from, from timelines and dates and membership specified to a degree that, again, it's just not something I could go along with. Nancy?
I was going to suggest one of the districts, if they have it, is 287 because I know they have a lawyer that they use to take a look at their policy and pull things together and that might expedite some of the, that might be helpful.
Any other comments on this one? Okay, thank you all. Next one?
As you review the crisis policy, you'll see there's a lot verbiage here too that we don't have currently in our plan. And we, Sarah and I have actually had one meeting just recently with Tom Morris and a representative from IEA, the Institute for Environmental Assessment, excuse me. So, we had the initial meeting looking over some of the requirements. We actually have four more scheduled between now and early April, so we'll come to an end and have things all prepared. We're moving from this little flip chart that we've had in the buildings for years with multicolor sheets of paper stapled together to actually three-ring binders for the purpose of being able to update them more efficiently and effectively. Each classroom will have a three-ring binder and a holder for it by the door. We're working and have already purchased backpacks in terms of a to-go pack if we have to evacuate a building, so everything's in it and you just walk out the door safely with that. So, we have a lot of work in process, but the policy is driving that work and the details will come at the end of those meetings for you.
Thank you. Any comments on this policy? The only, go ahead, Nancy.
When did you say you're coming back? April? Did I hear you right?
We'll have details surrounding procedures at the end of April, but it won't necessarily change the policy.
The only other comment I would make, I happen to be on the phone today with the chief of police and thanking him for the work that they do in our schools, thanking them for our police liaison, for DARE and for all the other pieces that they are involved in. They do a lot for this district and we are very, very grateful and I want to be very publicly grateful for the work that they do in our schools. Our St. Louis Park Police are a great asset to our community and to our kids here in the schools. And I'm just wondering, in light of Sandy Hook and other events that have occurred, if there are any other ways that we should involve the, our police and police liaison on, specifically on those kinds of threats?
We will include them when we're done with the procedures too, before they become final, so that they have a look at it to make sure it's something that they could also support in an emergency situation. And like you mentioned, they've been very, very effective in partnering with us. There have been a couple of times where we've had classrooms that would be difficult for a student to evacuate quickly enough. Those were already identified in our maps and when we've had our fire drills, they'd go directly to that room. So, we've been partnering with them all along very effectively, but we'll make sure that they, they see this before we put its final stamp on it as well.
Thank you, Tammy. Appreciate that. At this point, we are into our consent agenda. The board has had a chance to see that. At this time, we would request a motion for approval. Okay, Ken makes the motion. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Larry. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
You have a seven-o vote. There are no items on the action agenda tonight. The next item on our agenda is communications and transmittals. Julie?
When I was at the Aquila PTO meeting last week, a great teacher mentioned again that they're looking for mentors to work with students for their final projects as the culmination of the primary years IB program. I assume that's probably true at our, at Peter Hobart and Susan Lindgren as well. So, if there are any adults out there, you don't have to have a kid and it's probably even better if you don't have a fifth grader in, in that school, but it's a, it's a short-term obligation. I think about an hour a week for five or six weeks, but basically in spring when, soon as, soon. And I'm, I haven't done this yet. I will get to doing this one of these years, but anytime you can spend time volunteering with the students in our schools, it's a very rewarding experience and I've been very impressed with the projects they've come up with the last two years. We've had two years with Peter Hobart. And looking forward to the, the shows again this year, so it's a great opportunity for an adult to, to volunteer for a short period of time and then really see the impact of your work on the students that, at the end of the year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Joe?
We had a school board listening session on March thirteenth at, Susan Lindgren, Ken and I were, were there. We had five community members there. Despite the small crowd, we had a great conversation. The seven to eight-thirty meeting went from seven to nine fifteen or so, so maybe we should have cut it off, but it was great conversation. We learned a lot about the schoolyard gardens project, something that I'm sure we'll hear about through the school district here in the next couple of years. Julie Rappaport was there to, to discuss that. And that was a topic for the first forty-five minutes to hour and the remainder of the time, we talked about the space concerns mainly on the, the Peter Hobart sign, side and obviously that's something that's very important to, to us and the administration and the school board. And it's something that we will be addressing and hearing about coming up here in, in April. We'll have many discussions about that and be working, working through that. The last thing I'd like to say on the listening session and Ken can chime in if he wants to say anything else, we did, one of the five people who showed up was a student. He was there for a Boy Scout project. He was taking notes for the first maybe half hour of it, but then he, like many of our great St. Louis Park students, was chiming in and had some really great ideas about, about what, what we were doing on the, what we were doing at Peter Hobart and what we were planning on Peter Hobart and also on the school nutrition side. So, I thought it was a great, great conversation.
Yes, he had great input on the food nutrition side and he, he wants to see if we can do anything about that, so that's about it.
If not, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Larry, seconded by Joe. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
You have a seven-o vote and we are adjourned.